Kedoh shidneh, adeh hanadat so kizi do. Demo do na kijun na e inadi itneh kodo. Ado nas etz adah na e yolchach. We like to thank all the listeners. Thank you for tuning into our weekly Tuesday morning town hall for a COVID update. And we like to open with a prayer. Kodo shein so de zandini be'ana neil neto shik edoh shidneh. Kodeh hajon do leh shaman ha hasan yadel chil. Zelis san tuis san. Ado chal chieh hayolchach noh dey tsui. Halchel chieh halchewan chadetin tani. So anahrebi keh hajon kodo eh hon nihi inandi itnehon. Na ewet niyajini tlom kodo ntsunadilzin. Chuneh, chan dikuis chan da do dikwindezada shen kodo. Hana enlini inelki kon hidin neh bechlin. Ado bala ashla inlini a'atzhon. Nihi kedet od tchinhloh i gaholl ino lehli. Ha eshi nkhodo nal do igi hon do ya at ehih nji gihi. Nihi etz adoltoh adit eh. Ah la eh ya do ba'asht edinid eh nan den deh yego na antchendon na ilnahi iteh. Oko kodo eh ya at eh hon hilnahi do t'at. Ah niltzhon kon. Ado da istz ah inkon de neh bechle hajotso bekei kei dahonit bekei dahonit ini. Ado ashlatim bechle hajotso bohon hashineh lan hi deneh da'ntzande. Da b'ran don dal neshtoh da'altcha. Eh a'atzhon nachab al tahon noh do leh ah la anazeno. Ha la nihi hona ha s'ango dahonnoh. Nihi honesh kishna s'chago dahonnoh. Ado hona betz ahntita. Njuno banahi dah do leh. Ado kon hi kei dahonnoh bechle je. Niha'altcheneh nihi cho chieh nihi nal chieh da'ntle. A'atzhon iyo init neh. Ado kon hi nar kloshita dahonnoh. Ya at ehon hilnahi do t'at do leh. Sa'ad ya at ehii iyo o'tneh be'ya at ehii be'ch'e inandi chieh do leh. Ekach hanadon itzundo leh ya at ehon kon hilnahi do t'at do leh. A'atzhon benelni a'kui chieh. Nihi talachsoh da'ntle kon hi ch'ahndakre. Ba'acheh nitzundo bechle nachab al tahonnoh. Ado nihi talad anleh etrisin dey jahay kon ensesa da'at eh. Ihi heh be diitni do leh. Ado nihi talachsoh da'ntle. Ado kon chan nasneh neh bechle ha s'ango. Chapter coordinator da'ntle. Ado senior citizen. Ha s'tuisani ya'adahal yani da kon. Nachaba'atahol yano leh a'atzhon alalaj iteil nishi. Ado kon nachandal nishi a'atzhon dey nilnishi. Ba'achu yano leh nihi nihi nar neshinlini. Ha la eh be' niteh roh hona deh eshi bekei asiliah. Ado nasko neh nijekon ha'altcheneh danlini da'altcha'i. Hashineh lan kon da'iltcha njonon da'istcha do leh. Ehroh benashni do leh. Nahaz twi nihi zani ya'at eh hon bechle nahdahot at do leh. Ado hashineh lan azehil inedeh. Nahaz chan njonon hadalt ah indeh tlan hi ch'ch'edahas chieh do leh. A'atzhon oh yugo batsozulzen lan nashin dahot ah eh kodo. To'izenlini hon ba'ana ni'stlar do leh. Ba'behana nasit do leh. Ado hi nat ahlini hi nat ani danlini. Di tsuneh chi be'da bet'od chi don leh. Nat ani shchiin adon nihi be'esh bahasa anet chan nasneh leh deh be'benant'at. Keiheh benant'at zeladey nat ani a'atzhon. Ado do kon eh ya da kenar chieh deh da'at eh hon. Ba'benashni do leh. Oh ya'at ehon hilnahi do t'at do leh. Kon to'be'etsho de zanlini kon behana nasit do leh. Hashineh lan och'ah da'aldehi do da'atahol yano do leh kon. Da ha'ga'asit don njonon chan nahakach do leh. But ah eh kodo ha'ana nasit do leh. Adireh be'nihi ch'eh hujonaasli, 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 hujonaasli. Na ihi heh shik edoh shidneh. To'be'etsho de zanlini a'kui chieh t'ah eh ah neilki. Ado hi nat ani enlini hon. Hashin so gohna neshinlini ikei tcha da'ahl ahla. Oko eshen kodo am ba'banadit it ahlini hi nat ani enlini. Ado kodo shitze linlini Jonathan, President Jonathan Nez. Ado kon shiyaj Vice President Myron Lizer. But ah shi ilkei nanet do leh. Ado nihi azehil inedanlini ehroh kodo nihi ch'hanadatsit do leh. Oh nihi l'ishtana elzenit eh. Ha inyei out abadahol neh. Ado da'nihi doh minidronan chienit eh shik edoh shidneh. Kon to'oleh. At this time, Honorable President Jonathan Nez.
Ya't eh shik edoh shidneh di Jonathan Nez nihi l'neh. Navajo Nation President. Kodo a'kui chieh kodo hana nihi ch'ekondehli. Allah demo na t'lehonen na kijinda neshona eh di kon. Nihi l'ya'ailnigi di ch'oshtoi itini du kosintschaginahast etz adah. Eh kudzu bekei chieh ndaneshigi do nihi kei nihi neh a'atzhon kon dal neshigi. Ban dahui l'neh do leh. East Coast here. Leh ha'adeh eh oyoteh nades kidha noh banahana di COVID nineteen. Eh ya'amicron variant wil yego. Eh beni na eh leh Philadelphia hol ye deh eh. Di nihi chinto nihi zeh nan hi bekidast chieh do leh. Ta noh hot'ah behaz ani hanadaliah. Eh beni na kodeh eh ya de neh bekei yapakah deh eh. A'kui chieh eh hot'ah. Nihi behaz ani ha'deh eh di ma'shto dal eh da di noh hot'ah. Beni nagi chioh di nashni. Ah leh t'loh de belaganah bekei ya'da nashni. Do yaha nashneh do. Ah hot'ah eh beni na eh bekei chieh eh ya ndeiba. Do eh beni na eh nihi zeh do nihi chi bekidast chieh kon tcha da do chah. Akon deh ayaselchil kon de neh bekei yapakah. Beni nagi shi eh lan kon nihi kei nihi neh ba'da'aztsi. Di azeh bekei chieh naneshigi du kosintschaginahast etz adah. Allah ana kidah nachad'aztsi. Tchad she'tchad shi nacha shao ts'eh. Akon ad'ni di kon eh nachad'atzegi. Masan etchei nal nas da'zleh. Nihi doh oyoh betz ish bech'eh nda'aztegi. Eh ekad ba'aliya di kon shinkad. Nachad'atzeh hadnani gi fourth shot booster hadnani gi eh ekad. Anleh eh ni demo yajinyeh da' inleh kudzu crown point chieh. Hot'ah adin dal neshigi azeh ba'da'atzehegi eh da'ila adjeh. So ba'acheh nson. A'atzhon de neh bekei yapakah o'zel in danoh. L'nehigi doh. Ado nihi talad a'atzhon kon nihi Washington ha'sadjeh. Ah hot'ah benaneshi deh l'nehigi ba'acheh nitzun. Shik edoh shidneh. Nihi kedoh allah noh dahoh allah noh zenoh adeh. Da nihi nashigi eh cheh da nihi di ni lo leh. Chioh eh ah niltzhot da'asini ltsan okudzu na'azel in danlini gi. Bekei ntsi tsin goh eh eshi beni na. Do yego dendelkit. Akon deh hadaino l'neh shik eh nohlini ah shroh deh. Ado eshi benacheh di tchinhloh bi'ch'eh di kahot eh di du kosintschaginahast etz adah. So. Adada eh ya'atcha'yeh eh kon nihi kei nihi neh be'da doh l'na. Ado betz adoh edy'denegi eh aten. Ado la'ad'edenda. Eshi di hinba'dahui nihto leh shik eh noh shidneh. Akon yaselchil. Akon deh ad'shinid ah nihi ma'shto dal. Idoh di da t'egi hand sanitizers da'chotdal eh nihi la'be da'hl. Chioh eh di ch'oshtoi itini yilniltseh. Ado ado yego allah han'deit leh hadnani gi chioh ni. Kon Easter zlin demo ha'dan. Hashin allah ta'sitlin ah shon ah shon da'atzeh. Kon nihi ma'shtahlon allah ta'sitlin shik eh nohlini. Do nihi ma'shtahlonegi eh ra'tz beni na tcha di ch'eh. Nan deh nan des demo na aslin o'da'atzeh. Oyoteh nadadoh l'chil di nashnigi. Akon deh shanahot eh do leh. Allah demo azlin goh shik eh nohlini. Ado diroh kon dendelkit shi negi ya. Do eh lan kon nihi kei nihi neh nihi etz adah y'den da. Eh doh di hinbahadni. Akon mahallana ki tcha di ashla ha'schansoh ts'eh bi'ch'eh. Eh ya'aten. Ado nihi kei nihi neh la'adoh nihi etz ah y'den da. Eh di hinba'dahui ni. Akon deh nahast etzinyeh da' edeh allah nihi etz ah. La'andjo tza. Akon deh at'atahol ya. Nachad'aztsi gi shi beni na. Eh hot'ah eh bekei chieh naneshti du kosintschaginahast etz adah shik eh nohlini. Eh beni na na nihi masan etchei nohl. Nahlani gi ya. Nihi la eh nachad'aztsi. Eh cheh la. Akon deh eh ni nda'chregi deh ya kon la'do dey nizun. Ha eshi beni na. Akon deh di adadi neh ya. Ah shon deh nachad'atzeh doh. Akon eh ya di bi'ch'eh di kahot. Leh belaganah bekei ya'da eh la'adon de ma'shto dayo l'igo. Ado la eh kon di du kosintschaginahadolna'od eh. So hadaino l'ni doh. Kon shi l'la'doh. Beso nihi y'dedet eh ya na kidamili yajy enelt'at. Do l'chineh eh ha'schanez na di enelt'at. Beso nihi y'dedet eh. Eshi yoo ba'dahol ya do leh. Do na'altsoh shidroh shana' Vice President Lizer nihi yeb'chai ilya. Eh hana'b'chai gi eh ya di la'beso gi yoo chodahl. Idoh chioh di nashnigi beni ya eh beso y'dedet eh. Ado di ha'eshi danosanegi doh. Chioh di do be'ozinda ya'nasgo. Ah ha'di nashni shi do leh. Ash'teh da'do l'neh ah shon shik eh nohlini. La'shi eh aitna la'chirida beken daso la doh. Ah ha't'ida hoganda. Leh ren'ta'ol. Eh negi da'adjeh beso ch'oz in. Eh cheh la eh eh ol ya yoo beso ba'ajy liya. Hot'ah eh nas denna't do leh. So l'chindoh shinkad. Da'altcha'yeh gidoh. Na di eh da ban daso l'ni. Ehroh ba'acheh shik eh nohlini. Akon deh. Chioh allah goh shi di beso y'dedet eh. Eh ya ban deit. Eh negi eh ya be'sh le'chi. Tchoda nasko doh l'nil. Di be'indelkitigiyah telephone cellphone da'chodahl. Eh negi ya di ah gida lan kon de neh bekei yapakah. Hot'ah adalneh do leh. Do hogan doh. Nihi la'kon nihi kei nihi neh. Bahajo ba' nihi masan nihi chei nihi nalada talachsoh da. Chioh eh hogan ba' da doh l'nil da di noh. N'be'endahuit. Eh be'sh bahas'an ya'ya'adahl. Chi ah shon eh kodo bech'eh ah shon eh dadaleh. Be'sh bahas'an danlini gi. Di be'beso yitzihigin leh American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA dey l'nehigi. Be'la da'ol leh. Be'sh le'chi nasko doh l'nil. Tchoda nasko doh l'nil. W D noh. Ah hot'ah chioh aitna nihi eh na'altsoh shadeliyadoh be'indashil nesho. Eh hot'ah eh nas yinah doh leh di kudzu be'sh bahas'an ya'hanacha hadjeh. So nihi chioh ba'dey ni kech'eh eh nohlini nihi ka'ochieh. Nihi be'sh bahas'an akhoda ba'dohneh. Eh bech'eh di nashnigi beni benacheh eh. Ah hot'ah beso y'dedet eh. Ado y'teh da'do l'neh hadnani gi. Chioh tchuhalon doh be'sh le'chi da'hadalon goh hogan da'hadalon eh. Di ch'oshtoi itin doh yego da'at doh l'wohla. Chioh doh be'haszinda ad'shinid'at eh ya di du kosintschaginah. Ha't'eshi da ch'oshtoi itini nan nihi l'ya'at doh l'neh hot'ah. Eh beni na di beso gi tchodo be'sh le'chi hogan da'tehegi da. Di bra'be'neh telecommunication yoon dal nesho deh neh bekei yapakah. Hot'ah eh y'teh. Adilzin do leh. Na nitlini shik eh nohlini adet da'isnohtsagi. So ah shi kon toh de nek yechi nihi ch'eh ha'sit do leh. Do hadaino l'ni doh. Kodo eh ya nacha'achan da nitzunoh di neh kodo sa'be shanabel. Vice President Lizer doh kodo nachandal neshigi. So kon toh shi hana nihi ch'eguishtla doh leh. De nek yechi ka'shi eh belaganah yechi.
So we also wanted to let everybody know in the English language that. You know, we are not out of the pandemic just yet. You know that in Philadelphia, the East Coast. You're starting to see some numbers jump up. They're also putting the mask mandate back in place. We have a mask mandate that we've never stopped. And so we're just keeping everybody safe. I know people say, well, masks don't work or shots don't work. But you know what? Look at the data and I show this to you every Tuesday at ten AM. You know, in the first slide there, it tells you that. You know, one thousand seven hundred forty-one people have passed away. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the families. And yesterday alone, three new cases, just three. Yes, you heard right. Zero deaths. And you know what? We thank God for that, but we also pray for the three that will get through this virus quickly. Now, slide two, this is what I'm talking about. Slide two. If you look at slide two, you can see the orange there, the death rate. Look at that. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight days at zero. Thank God. On the ninth day, there was only one death. And you know, we contribute that to the vaccine. We contribute it to wearing a mask following these mandates. So we got to continue to do our due diligence. And if you see the blue line, you can see it fluctuates the daily case counts. And sometimes we go up to as high as twenty-two and then yesterday as high as three. So let's stay the course, ladies and gentlemen. Don't quit. I seen some people not wearing masks during the Easter Sunday. And I won't tell you who. But we need to continue to keep our masks on. And I hope we, I hope and pray we don't see an increase in cases because of the Easter weekend. But I'm sure you all had a great Easter, you know, Good Friday was when Christ was crucified. Sunday was resurrection of a cry of Christ. And you know, it just shows also that we have conquered death through the love of Jesus Christ. And I hope you all had a great day with your family. Now, slide three just tells you the progression since the start of the pandemic. And you can see some very low numbers there. You look, you look at it, maybe there's five, but I say four surges that happened. One in May of two thousand and twenty. And then another one during the holidays two thousand and twenty. Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Years. And then another one, it started creeping up on August, in August of two thousand and twenty-one. It hit a peak, a little small peak in December. It started to go down, but it looks like we kind of let our guard down. Because we did so good during the holidays in December, November, December, and January of two thousand and twenty-one. Then right around January, February, boy, that was the biggest increase that occurred. Not just here on the Navajo Nation, but all across the country. And now we are at all time low once again. So keep your guard up, keep your mask on, keep doing what you're doing and get vaccinated. You know, the fourth shot is available. Every six months you should be getting a booster. So first and second doses. If you look at slide four, that's the first and second doses. Look at that forty-six percent. Five to eleven year olds, seventy-four point two percent, twelve to nineteen year olds. Fifty-eight point four percent, twenty to twenty-four years old. Come on, twenty to twenty-four year old. We need to do better. Sixty-four point eight percent, twenty-five to forty-four years old. And it starts increasing there forty-five to sixty-four years, eighty-four percent. And look at our elders. Look at the elders. That should tell you something. Because our elders are taking this pandemic very, very seriously. Eighty-nine point two percent. And overall, first and second doses, seventy-five point five percent of our Navajo people have, you know, received the first and second doses. So every six months, check your card, six months. Don't forget, you got to check your card. If you're up, it'll show every six months from when you last got your booster, get another one. The fourth booster is available, but that's just for people that have health issues, diabetes, cardiovascular disease, you know, cancer. And those in that most vulnerable population. But they're going to be approving that for all of us shortly. And you know, I'm probably up for a fourth dose as well. I'm going to take it, you know, and our kids also are in need of boosters as well. Those that are under twelve. My son Christopher, he's got his third shot. The little one Alex has two shots. So we're, and Fefelia has three shots. So we're walking the top and we just encourage you to. We're, you know, we're not just telling people to get a shot. We're also getting it for ourselves as well. But thank you so much. We have a lot of information to share with you today from the Health Command Operations Center. Department of Health, as well as the Indian Health Services. And you know, share this information with your family members. And I know this is a lot. I couldn't, you know, say a lot of it in Navajo, but help us out. Translate it to our elders in Navajo and thank them for us as well. We also pray for our leadership, the Navajo Nation Council. And for what they're doing for us as well. And we appreciate all the prayers from, for the President, Vice President Myron Lizer and I. So thank you so much. God bless you. Have a wonderful day and wear your mask, everybody. God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation.
Myron Lizer here. Thank you, Mr. President. With your report, your words. Real quick, as I always do, I give out what it looks like around us. But there's been limited numbers as far as reporting and then timely reporting. As most of the states Department of Health have changed the way they're reporting these numbers. So what I do have is a little bit of some information and news from the nation. And I'll try to touch upon the latest updates, which might be almost several days old. But we'll give you a good rendering on what this pandemic looks like. On the Navajo operating under the orange status, if you remember, in its reopening plan. Until March fourth to two thousand and twenty-two, when the Navajo Nation downgraded to yellow status. And this allows less restrictions to the Navajo public and our visitors, which is what President was talking about. You know, still need to be mindful that this pandemic is not over. So continue to be careful out there. In the United States nationally, after a judge in Tampa, Florida ruled that the national mask mandate, which covered airlines, airports, mass transit and taxis was lawful. Citizens are no longer required to wear a mask on public transport to the US after federal judges voided a national mandate. And so the US has recorded more than eighty point six million infections and nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred coronavirus related deaths since the pandemic began. So real quick on that travel requirement now, again, if everybody's, since it's no longer required or mandated that you should, you know, put your best wisdom, your judgment forward there. Whether you'll, you'll mask up. And most people generally are probably, especially if you come from the Navajo Nation, they're still wearing masks. So continue to be careful out there or just limit travel, right? Stay home. It's kind of always been the best thing. If you're worried about others that aren't wearing the masks out there, then one thing we could do is stay home. But you know, continue to wear masks out in public here. This part. Arizona news here. As of April thirteenth here, so a few days ago. The total positive cases in Arizona was two million and sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven. We do have a population of almost seven million in Arizona. So that kind of gives you how many cases in Arizona we've had. Batch County, twenty-two thousand three hundred and six. Navajo County, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-three. And Coconino County, forty-three thousand five hundred and ninety. Colorado news, nothing to report. We do have one million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand and seventy total positive cases in the state of Colorado. And we report Colorado because the nation has sizable ranch land base out there in Colorado. So we can say that the Navajo Nation does have land in Colorado. So that's why we report. We have a lot of Navajos too that live in Colorado. New Mexico news here. We have a total positive cases, five hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and eighty. San Juan County. No new reporting on San Juan County and also McKinley County. So I guess the Mexico Department of Health is one of those that kind of is struggling with their numbers and reporting. Utah rounding out our tri-state area. Total positive cases, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-one there in Utah with southeastern Utah. San Juan County, three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one. And our own Utah Navajo Health System, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. So nothing's changed. You know, if you do feel sick, please stay home. Refrain from going out into the public setting. You feel unwell and even if you're unsure if it's COVID nineteen, again, you know, logic tells you to stay home until you do find out. Slowing the spread of the virus here means taking those precautions, not only so that you can rest and recover, but also to keep others safe. That's what it's always been about. COVID nineteen cases and hospitalizations are declining and you'll hear a little more on that here. We have our health officials here, which we do appreciate their leadership. We appreciate their sacrifice. We appreciate their hard work in helping keep our people safe here. So all of our frontline responders, all of our doctors, our health professionals, our nurses, our EMTs, our respiratory technicians, everybody that works in our public health facilities. Even the EMT drivers, the fire first responders, the police, our public safety rangers, all of them have been integral. In helping us mitigate this virus here on Navajo, being the frontline people who also have to go home. So we appreciate their ability to help steer the nation and keep us safe. And so lastly, we do appreciate all of their, their, their help and their leadership. As we see the hospitalizations are declining. The vaccine has done a great job here on limiting the spread and protecting people from severe illness and being hospitalized. Make sure to get your booster as well. And we appreciate that you all, those that are getting your hardship checks. I know there's many out there that are clamoring to get theirs and maybe, you know, getting a little antsy that they haven't received theirs. I think the fear, the doubt that's there, you know, again, just let OC and our controller, their team that are working diligently, very hard, very feverishly for you all to get the checks out, nailed out. And you know, this, some of the issues that are arising that speaks to us as leadership, our Navajo Nation, that we could do a whole better job of getting up to date as far as our infrastructure, the way we handle data. I've been advocating for our IT section to be bolstered with the latest information, with the latest data, with the latest platforms. The, it's called ERP. Gosh, the word escapes me right now. It's a platform where enterprise resource platform that just, the whole nation is apprised within data, within a platform and reporting and writing reports. And, and just getting a backdrop, an overarching, you know, dashboard on where the nation sits right now. Needs to be under one platform that'll help us all report more timely to the people, our constituents. And until we get updated IT and the infrastructure in place. We've been advocating for that. Use ARPA dollars first before that, use CARES dollars. And again, it's on us as leaders to give our people the best fighting chance here to, to do what they need to do. And as we need to do what we need to do, we appreciate the leadership of our country. uh we appreciate the leadership of our controller, Elizabeth B. Gate. Again, uh she and their OOC is working hard, even working after hours, even working on weekends to get these checks printed, stuffed into envelopes and out into the mail. So uh prayers for them and we ask for you all to be patient out there, again. Uh and when you do get your check, spend it all local. I'll make that, I wish I could have wrote a vice presidential executive order, buy Navajo by local. You know, we're all in this together and the more we retain, the more opportunity we have for our own business owners and our entrepreneurs. I've always been advocating for that from day one, uh buy Navajo by local. I realize there's not a lot of uh uh, you know, things that the Navajo Nation needs, it's all out in the border towns. But one thing I've uh committed my life to is uh those things that we can handle. So uh the more you spend on Navajo, the more opportunity there is, plain and simple trickle-down economics. It's gonna stay on the nation a lot longer if our people buy Navajo by local and save them, save some of your money, put it away for a rainy day, there'll be opportunity for you in the future. So I've gone from presenting down to preaching, but uh we appreciate you all. And uh ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce Dr. Jill Jim, our Executive Director of our uh uh Navajo Department of Health. Uh we appreciate her leadership, we appreciate her ability to uh maintain there in a pandemic. Who would have thought that we'd be in this pandemic, Dr. Jim? We appreciate your stellar leadership in this, so take it away.
Thank you, Vice President, uh for all your kind words and your continued information, informing the Navajo people of the pandemic and safe travels today to you and President. I know you are out in the communities, um meeting with um the Navajo people every single day and reminding them of the um pandemic as well. So I am Dr. Jill Jim, I'm the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health and we um participate in these weekly calls basically to provide information about COVID. And as the Vice President mentioned, who would have thought um a couple of years ago that we would be in this situation? But um as we continue to encourage um individuals to take all the precaution that they can, the other um message I want to just continue to remind everyone is that as long as we're continuing to see cases and we're continuing to see um people pass from COVID and if they're a lot higher than some of our other um regular respiratory diseases during this time like flu, um I believe that still warrants us to continue to take precautions. So um do everything that you can, I know President mentioned yes, uh maybe there was a little, maybe we were more lax um in our gatherings, but those orders that are in place, we saw um orders that are still encouraging people to limit gatherings and also to um take precautions. There are guidelines that will, we're still updating, that will generally speak to most of the events that are allowed. And hopefully, if the numbers continue to go down, we'll continue new op- continue to look at new options for expanding reopening to a larger scale and allowing larger gatherings and um but of course, that will all have to be done, as President mentioned, monitoring what is occurring um uh internationally and also um on the other side of the coast, on the east coast as well. So on the Navajo Nation, we still have a mask mandate and and then also one of the requirements, I think, that are still in effect is people, um executive employees to uh be up to date on their vaccines as well as um fully vaccinated for the council legislation. So there are still um sort of those mandates for vaccine that we might tend to forget. So we still have a small po- uh portion of our population that aren't fully vaccinated. So I hope that we can um encourage those individuals within their families to consider getting vaccinated and it might not be a priority to them right now because they might have gotten sick with Omicron. In this last search, a lot of people got Omicron and I think maybe Dr. Va can speak to that. I know that we try to encourage everyone to get vaccinated, even though they might have gone Omicron and there's just a lot of misinformation that's still out there. So I just want to um let people know that just keep your guard up and um continue to carry your hand sanitizer and wear your mask when you're out in the city. Um and I've noticed that when I go out, um maybe a couple of weeks ago into Albuquerque as well and people, um the Navajo people are still wearing their mask. I just want to commend these um um young people and any age out there still wearing their mask. So um I'll end there and I'll just say And now I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Dr. Va and um she's with the Health Command Operations Center um through the Navajo Area Indian Health Service. So Dr. Va, um go ahead and take it away, thank you.
Hi, good morning, thank you so much, Dr. Jim. And thank you all for joining us this morning on um on our President's uh uh our President's Town Hall this morning. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to continue to work closely with our Navajo Nation partners as well as um coordinate our efforts so that we continue to serve our communities the best as we could, as well as share information um in a timely way. And so I am representing our IHS um team today. Um and one of the things I wanted to just go over with everybody um are the tools that we have at hand. And so let me just, I am going to share um my PowerPoint um so that you can see some of the things I would like to cover. And so first of all, um as Dr. Jim was mentioning, you know, we are continuing to follow trends across the globe, as well as here in the United States, as well as here in Navajo Nation. And so we do understand at this point, the more contagious and transmissible um subvariant um of Omicron, which is of course is of COVID, another variant of COVID-nineteen, is the dominant form at this point. Um but we are in a better position than we have been in the, since the beginning of this pandemic. We have vaccines, we have boosters, we have tests. Not only do we have tests at our facilities and in our labs, but we also have home test kits. Um and we have treatment. And so the first thing I want to say is with vaccines. If you have not gotten vaccinated yet, please start your vaccine series and get vaccinated. Vaccines are available for anyone who's five years and older. If you have not gotten your booster yet, please come in and get your boosters. That means you completed a primary series with two doses of Moderna or Pfizer or one dose of Johnson-Johnson and you are due for a booster. So outside of five months for the two-dose series or outside of two months for Johnson-Johnson, please come and get your booster. And then the most recent news is if you're fifty and older, you are now eligible for a second booster. And so if you had your first booster more than four months ago, you are eligible and you are fifty years old, you are eligible for a second booster. We do share our um current schedule for vaccine events and vaccine times uh across Navajo Nation with our Navajo Nation partners. And so that is shared um with the Office of the President, Vice President, as well as with Navajo Nation. So please check that for the um for the most updated information near you. So vaccines and boosters, the other thing I want to note is you actually do not have to delay. Um that has been a, there has been like this misunderstanding of that possibly out in social media, is that you might have to delay if you were infected with Omicron or infected with COVID-nineteen. You don't have to delay. If you were infected, um you can get vaccinated. All you have to do is finish your isolation period and then go and get vaccinated. So there's no need to wait. Um with that being said, I do want to talk about the importance of testing. So at this point, regardless of your vaccine status, if you are symptomatic, please pick up a test kit. Either a home test kit, a rapid test kit, or go to your nearest facility and get tested. Um because the sooner you test, if you don't delay, you can get treated if you're eligible. Pretty much anyone who's eighteen and older is eligible for treatment. And so and the sooner you treat, the more effective that treatment is. And so do not delay if you are symptomatic, please get tested as soon as possible with any type of testing that is available, whether it's through your facility, through labs, or if you have a home test kit at home. Go ahead and get tested. I do want to note there are, at this time, you're wondering, are the treatment effective with the circulating COVID strain? Yes, they are. Right now, across Navajo Nation, we have treatment available and accessible. Um the first-line treatment is actually Paxlovid. If you've heard of this treatment, it's really simple, it's actually just a pill, that's it, one pill um that you have to take. Um or you can also get another first-line treatment called Remdesivir. This is taken, this is IV medication over three days. And so we have two first-line treatments, either Paxlovid, the oral medication, or Remdesivir, which is an IV medication over three days. If you are not eligible for any of these, we have other options too. We continue to still use monoclonal antibody treatment, um as noted here. And the most current form that is available as a second-line option, if Paxlovid or Remdesivir is not an option. But in order to be eligible for any of this and to start that process, if you are symptomatic, get tested and report it to the nearest facility um to you. And your facility, either the public health team or your provider, will connect you to treatment. They'll review over your eligibility and then connect you to treatment. So it's really important to test and treat. And then lastly, I do want to remind everybody that as people are lifting up certain restrictions across the United States and other states and other regions, um we still have flu circulating. And so we are seeing an uptick in flu cases. And this is likely because people are are less likely to mask up. Um and so if you haven't received your flu vaccine, please get vaccinated. Um and just please be aware that flu is also circulating right now. Thank you so much. Next, I would like to introduce Larissa Cruz. She is part of our Navajo Nation, um you know, Fight Epi Data and Data Translation Team. And she will present on behalf of Del Yasi, our Navajo EpiCenter partners, um the most current situation here in Navajo Nation. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Va. Um let me go ahead and start with our daily update for today. Okay, uh so trusting you all can see my screen now. Um okay, uh so this is the update for April first through the fourteenth. Um so as you can see here, the number of cases has remained fairly steady for this past month. Um however, in this most recent week, we did see it kind of fluctuate upwards. Um and that did impact our infection rate a bit to one point seventeen. So again, when the infection rate is above one, that just means that uh COVID is on average being transmitted to at least one other person. Um so we will continue to keep monitoring that and hopefully we will see these trends um kind of fluctuate downwards this upcoming week. Um but we will continue to monitor that. In terms of overall incidence, we see that across Navajo Nation for this most recent period, there was on average forty-two cases per hundred thousand population. So that does keep us at the yellow threshold. On average, you can see that majority of service areas are below a rate of fifty, with the exception of two areas, so Gallup seeing a rate between fifty to ninety-nine and Chenly being the higher rate uh between one hundred to about one forty-nine. And so just keeping an eye out on these kind of shifting rates here. And looking at our other metrics, we see percent positivity is at five percent and on average, there was four hundred and thirty-seven tests conducted on a daily basis. And hospital capacity also slightly fluctuated upwards. So hospital beds are currently at fifty-seven percent daily occupancy and ICU beds are at seventy-eight percent daily occupancy. Our most recent vaccination data here, we see that sixty-seven percent of Navajo Nation residents have completed at least a primary series. And forty-five percent of Navajo Nation residents are fully up to date, meaning they have completed uh their booster and booster series. So again, just reiterating what Dr. Va mentioned earlier, really encouraging everyone to get vaccinated or make sure that you are fully up to date with that booster schedule. Looking at our overall trends in comparison to the United States, we see again, Navajo Nation kind of fluctuating there around the same kind of rate. And we see uh overall United States similarly staying around that same kind of average. So as you can see here, our border states have um kind of uh gone down to around the same rate. Um if you recall, Arizona did see a little bit of an increase a few weeks ago. They are back to um a lower rate. Currently, we're seeing the higher rates in the northeastern United States. So as you can see, uh that darker blue kind of shaded area, we're seeing a lot of the higher rates in places like New York, Vermont, et cetera. Um but in our neighborhood, in these border states, we see kind of lower rates being reported in. And if we look at it by county, again, we see some of these counties improving against moderate immunity transmission, some again moving into low community transmission. But we do continue to see some of those Navajo Nation counties remain in substantial or high community transmission. In terms of strain surveillance, we have continued to identify a few more Omicron cases and we continue to monitor, you know, what um what potential sublinages can arise. As of right now, the predominant Omicron is that original Omicron variant strain. However, if we're looking at the overall United States trends, we're seeing that BA2 has become the predominant strain at this time. And we are now seeing also the BA2 point twelve point one strain begin to kind of make its way here as well, um as you can see in that red shaded area. For our highest chapters, two chapters made it to the list this week and due to privacy and confidentiality, we are not disclosing the name of these chapters, but our internal team is reaching out to make sure these chapters are aware of um potential high uh high-risk status. So overall, cases continue to remain relatively low and test positivity also remains relatively low and stable, um as does hospital capacity. So overall, we continue to see our indicators remain at a lovely yellow. And so this concludes today's updates and I will now hand it back over to Dr. Fowler, thank you.
Thank you, Larissa.
Thank you, Larissa. Okay, we'll talk a shame, hold on, here's another, so let's go.